It is now 7:08 and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Blakely.
Here.
Counselor Keys.
Here.
Counselor Levy. Counselor Pruschel.
Here.
And President Duncan.
Here.
All are present, we have a forum.
At this time, councilors, please mute your phones. I would like to ask that everyone please rise standing. We will have a moment of silence following the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of Robert "Bob" Gilliam, former chief of the Beloit Fire Department and first African-American Beloit Fire Chief. He passed away on March 24th. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated.
This evening, there are several proclamations under special orders of the day and announcements. The first one is a proclamation congratulating the State Line Boys and Girls Club on upcoming groundbreaking of their new facility. The proclamation reads, whereas the State Line Boys and Girls Club has been a force for good in the lives of youth for over 50 years, and whereas 79% of the youth served at our State Line Boys and Girls Club are age 12 and younger, 54% are minority races or ethnicities, and 45% live in single-parent households; and whereas the State Line Boys and Girls Club empowers youth to reach their full potential as productive, caring, responsible community members; and whereas the State Line Boys and Girls Club provides a welcoming, positive environment for youth to have fun, participate in life-changing programs, and build supportive relationships with peers and caring adults; and whereas the State Line Boys and Girls Club offers health and wellness programs to teach and inspire healthy lifestyles that will follow youth into adulthood; and whereas youth are provided strong academic mentoring and enrichment activities that promote skill-building, confidence, and a love of learning in a safe, supportive, and innovative environment; and whereas club members participate in community service and leadership programs that build their skills and confidence while teaching them that they have the power to positively bring about change in their community; and whereas the State Line Boys and Girls Club has improved many children's lives and positively influenced countless families in our community and is poised to do so for many years to come. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Beloit that the State Line Boys and Girls Club is an invaluable community advocate for our youth, providing encouragement and stability, supporting dreams and goals. We offer congratulations on the upcoming groundbreaking of their new facility, which will increase team programming and offer expanded science, technology, engineering, art, and math activities. Dated this 5th day of April 2021, Regina Duncan, President, City Council.
Thank you, Clerk Stottler. At this time, we have Mark Rind who's here with us today, the CEO of Boys and Girls Club, and he, we would like for him to say a few words if he would. And before you do that, I would like to take a photo and present you with the proclamation so you can just stand right there, Mark, and then I'll get, you can come to the podium.
I just want to say thank you, not only to the City Council but to the City of Beloit for the proclamation and everything that you've done up till now to get us to this point. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our leadership team, our staff, our club members, and the rest of the community, again, I want to say thank you. Tomorrow is actually our groundbreaking, it's an exciting day, one of many exciting days to come, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I know that my fellow councilors are listening and applauding as well, but I just want to say from all of us, congratulations and thank you for all you do to support our youth here in Beloit, and can't wait to join you at the groundbreaking. So thank you for being here, Mark.
Item 3B is a proclamation recognizing April as National Fair Housing Month. The proclamation reads, whereas April 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of National Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and therefore is an appropriate time for all citizens to reflect on the principles which led to a national policy of fair and equal housing opportunities across the United States. And whereas, fair and equal opportunity in housing means that persons of equal income have the same access to the sale, rental, and financing of all housing regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, family status, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, or ancestry. And whereas, fair housing is the policy of the City of Beloit and the implementation of that policy requires the positive commitment, involvement, and support of each of our citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month and does hereby encourage all citizens to abide by the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Laws and ask the citizens of the city to join in reaffirming the obligation and commitment to fair housing opportunities for all. Adopted this 5th day of April 2021, Regina Duncan, Beloit City Council President.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Next, we'll go to the next proclamation.
Item 3C is a proclamation recognizing April 16th, 2021, as Healthcare Decisions Day. The proclamation reads, whereas Healthcare Decisions Day is designed to raise public awareness of the need to plan ahead for healthcare decisions related to end-of-life care and medical decision-making whenever patients are unable to speak for themselves and to encourage the specific use of advance directives to communicate these important healthcare decisions. And whereas, Wisconsin State Statute 154 provides the specifics of our advance directives laws and offers a model form for patient use. And whereas, it is estimated that only about 30% of people in Wisconsin have executed an advance directive. Moreover, it is estimated that less than 50% of severely or terminally ill patients have an advanced directive. And whereas, it is likely that a significant reason for these low percentages is that there is both a lack of knowledge and considerable confusion in the public about advanced directives. And whereas, one of the principal goals of Healthcare Decisions Day is to encourage hospitals, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, continuing care retirement communities, and hospices to participate in a statewide effort to provide clear and consistent information to the public about advanced directives, as well as to encourage medical professionals and lawyers to volunteer their time and efforts to improve public knowledge and increase the number of Beloit residents with advanced directives. And whereas, organizations throughout Beloit, Wisconsin have endorsed this event and are committed to educating the public about the importance of discussing healthcare choices and executing advanced directives. And whereas, as a result of April 16th, 2021, being recognized as Healthcare Decisions Day in Beloit, more community members will have conversations about their healthcare decisions, more individuals will execute advanced directives to make their wishes known, and fewer families and healthcare providers will have to struggle with making difficult healthcare decisions in the absence of guidance from the patient. Now therefore, the Beloit City Council recognizes April 16th, 2021, as Healthcare Decisions Day in Beloit and calls this observance to the attention of all residents. Presented this 5th day of April 2021, Regina Duncan, Council President.
Thank you, Clerk Stottler, and it's an honor to raise public awareness and for people to plan ahead and make important healthcare decisions. So thank you. Next proclamation, please.
Item 3D is a proclamation declaring April as Small Talks Month in the City of Beloit. The proclamation reads, whereas, Small Talks is sponsored by the Wisconsin Department of Health Services in collaboration with partners statewide and in our own city of Beloit, Wisconsin, to educate parents and caregivers about the consequences of underage drinking and empower them with the knowledge and tools to begin having short, casual conversations with kids starting at age 8 about the dangers of underage drinking. And whereas, underage drinking has severe consequences, many of which parents and caregivers may not be fully aware. Consequences of underage drinking may include injury or death from accidents, unintended, unwanted, and unprotected sexual activity, academic problems, and drug use. And whereas, parents and caregivers have a significant influence on young people's decisions about alcohol consumption. And whereas, alcohol used by young people is dangerous, not only because of the risk associated with impairment, but also because of the grave threat to their long-term development and well-being. And whereas, parents, educators, and community leaders who work with our young people every day are best advocates for responsible decision-making. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Beloit hereby proclaims April as Small Talks Month in the City of Beloit and calls on community members, especially parents and caregivers, to observe this month with participation in underage drinking prevention activities, and be it further proclaimed that all community members are encouraged to make informed decisions and respond appropriately to prevent underage drinking. Dated this 5th day of April 2021, Regina Duncan, City Council President.
Thank you, Clerk Stottler, for reading that proclamation. We'll go on to the next.
And last but not least, item 3E is a proclamation recognizing April 4th through the 10th of 2021 as National Library Week. The proclamation reads, whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places at the heart of their communities, fostering a sense of belonging and striving to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve. And whereas, today's libraries extend far beyond the four walls of a building, providing valuable resources, services, and programming for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas, libraries ensure equity of access by providing free computer and Wi-Fi, as well as providing citizens opportunities to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. And whereas, in times of crisis, libraries play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. And whereas, to adapt to our world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the ever-changing needs of the community. And whereas, libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas, Beloit Public Library seeks to remove barriers for all members of its community to provide equal access for all, evidenced in its move to remove fines of all juvenile and young adult materials checked out at BPL from here on forward. And whereas, libraries across the nation are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Beloit proclaims National Library Week, April 4th through the 10th. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit Beloit Public Library in person or online to access its wealth of materials, resources, and services to transform lives and strengthen the greater Beloit community. Dated the 5th day of April 2021, Regina Duncan, Council President.
Thank you, Clerk Stottler. And before us today, we have Nick Demasses who's our library director here, and we are so honored. Congratulations, Nick, and I'll bring your proclamation out to you on behalf of the Beloit City Council.
Thank you, thanks so much. Okay, President Duncan, councilors, City Manager Curtis Luther, thank you so much. Thanks for recognizing all of these principles, all these wherashes. It's really what we stand on and what guides us and directs us every day of the year. And you heard one of those, removing barriers. Early literacy is one of our priorities in our services and for our community, and so we are always looking for ways to remove barriers between the materials that sit on our shelves and the little hands that are reaching for them. So this is a very important way to do this by removing the overdue fines that can often cause an economic hardship and therefore lead to a parent, a caregiver saying, no, let's not take so many of those books this time, or let's not take any this time. So we want to get these materials into the households, and this is just an exceptional way to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Nick, for being here, and I'm sure that many of our residents read the article that was in the Beloit Daily News about the fines, so that's just wonderful that we are making the library accessible for all children and residents and families. So thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
On behalf of our council. I know everyone, especially Sherry Blakely, Counselor Blakely serves on your board, so yeah, so thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks so much.
Moving on to item 4, which is public hearings. Item 4A is consideration of Resolution 2021-040 authorizing a conditional use permit to allow the possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic beverages in a PLY district for the property located at 850 Pleasant Street.
Our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will provide us with an overview.
ACT Scott on behalf of Beloit Powerhouse LLC has applied for this conditional use permit to allow alcohol sales, possession, and consumption at the Powerhouse Building. They have identified the areas for that alcohol sales, and that would be the Student Union, the Athletic Facility, the Conference Center, and College Recreational Events. Included in your packet was a few floor plans which show the locations in yellow that they're anticipating having alcohol sales, possession, and consumption. This is only allowed if reviewed as part of a conditional use permit, so this would be their first step. Their second step would be the liquor license. This was recommended, reviewed by the Plan Commission at their last meeting, and recommended for approval, subject to the three conditions listed in the attached resolution, and subject to the review of the Conditional Use Permit Decision Form, which is also included in your packet. The conditions of approval include the following. This conditional use permit authorizes the sales, possession, and consumption of alcohol in the indoor locations identified on the site plan for the building located at 850 Pleasant Street. The applicant shall obtain and retain all applicable liquor licenses while the conditional use is established and maintained. And then our standard condition of major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes are able to be approved administratively, and this is on your agenda for action tonight.
Thank you, Julie. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the Clerk Treasurer please provide any public input received?
I did not receive any public input on this item.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward. Final call. The public hearing is now closed. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
I will make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Pruschel, is there a second?
Nancy Forbeck, second.
Second by Counselor Forbeck. At this time, I'll take questions and discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, Madam President.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, but I think we can certainly trust Beloit College to handle this very well, so thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? Counselor?
The only question that I have is, Julie, if I'm looking at this correctly, did one of them vote against it, and if so, can you explain what the rationale was for that?
I think the concern, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but the concern was there were a number of questions related to where the alcohol was going to be served, and some concern about the NCAA rules regarding alcohol around sporting events, and because the applicant was not available to answer that question, we had one no vote.
Okay.
Counselor Levy, did you have any further questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, Julie's correct about the concerns about the NCAA. The NCAA compliance, because they do have rules regarding sporting events, and there was nobody there to really answer those questions or concerns. I'm sure the college will address that. The other vote was an abstention because he's an employee of the college, so that's how we ended up with a 401. Yeah, so it's, I'm quite certain that the college would like to maintain their good standing with the NCAA, and so I'm sure they'll answer those concerns when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel, and I do not have any questions or discussion. So at this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, 7-0. Item 4B is consideration of Ordinance Number 3704, amending the zoning district map of the City of Beloit from R1A, Single Family Residential District, to R1B, Single Family Residential District, for the property located at 2222 Canterbury Drive. This is first reading.
Thank you. At this time, our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will provide us with an overview.
So NG Deerpath Land LLC purchased the land that was formerly owned by Acorn, that last piece in the Deerfield subdivision, and they have proposed a preliminary plat, which was reviewed by Plan Commission already, which will create eight buildable single-family lots on two new cul-de-sacs to be separated by a three-acre outlot reserved for woodland preservation, stormwater management, and floodplain compliance. As they were looking at the lots and laying it out to try to maximize preservation of the environmental aspects of this site, they were not able to make a lot that would meet the setback, the front setback for R1A for one of the lots, Lot 57. And so as we did for Park Mountain North, we suggested just upzoning from R1A to R1B, which is the same land uses, the same proposed uses are in that district. Really only, there's two changes. One is the front yard setback, which goes from 30 to 20 feet, and one is the density, which goes from five units per acre to 7.25 units per acre. The preliminary plat that they have proposed is actually at about one dwelling unit per gross acre, so they're not proposing any increase in density, it's just to address the setbacks. Plan Commission reviewed this at their last meeting and recommended approval, 6-0, to recommend approval of this zoning map amendment, and as Clerk Stottler said, this is on your agenda for first reading tonight.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the Clerk Treasurer please provide any public input received?
No input was received on this public hearing.
Thank you. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward. Final call. The public hearing is now closed. This is a first reading. Can I please have a motion to lay over this item? Is there a motion?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Move by Counselor Forbeck, is there a second?
I will second, this is Counselor Blakely.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Blakely. Now we'll take questions and discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just a comment that I'm happy that this is finally getting done. I know that this has been a difficult acreage to get single family on, and I'm delighted that we've come up with this great land. That's it, thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just want to comment that this is well-covered at the Plan Commission meeting, there were a lot of questions, and it's good to see them come up with a way to get this built through. I think this isn't the first time I've seen it since I've been on the council, there was a proposal quite a few years ago regarding this area that didn't really work, and I'm happy to see somebody figure this out. And I'd also like to note that I think it's two or maybe three oak trees, large oaks are saved by this plan, because they will be part of the runoff and the natural area left between the two cul-de-sacs, so good to see, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel, and I just have a comment. I know when reading the report, it was great to see that the residents and also that the public were notified of this, so just wanted to make mention of this. So at this time, there's a motion and a second to lay over the ordinance. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, 7-0. Item 4C is consideration of Ordinance Number 3705, amending the zoning district map of the City of Beloit from M2, General Industrial District, to C3, Community Commercial District, for the property located at 3155 Prairie Avenue. This is first reading.
At this time, our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will provide us with the report. Julie.
Prairie Avenue LLC and Seth Waddle have submitted an application for review and consideration of the zoning map amendment. Their request is from M2, General Manufacturing District, to C3, Community Commercial District, to allow for a convenience store with fuel and a car wash. Initially, when this was zoned, M2, that was before Inman Extension went through, so now this is more of a major commercial corridor, so we feel that the C3 is more appropriate. You may remember that you approved an amendment to the future land use map of the City's Conference of Plan to recommend planned mixed uses on this property. Plan Commission reviewed this application on March 17th and voted unanimously, 6-0, to recommend approval of this zoning map amendment. It is on your agenda for first reading tonight.
At this, thank you, Julie. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the Clerk Treasurer please provide any public input received?
We did not receive any input on this public hearing.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward. Final call. The public hearing is now closed. This is a first reading, so can I please have a motion to lay over this item? Is there a motion?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Move by Counselor Forbeck, is there a second?
Counselor Keys will second.
Second by Counselor Keys. Now we'll take questions and discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, Madam President.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't, thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there's a motion and a second to lay over the ordinance. I'll ask the clerk to please provide any public input received. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys. Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes seven zero unanimously, and, uh, item five is public comment.
We have reached the point on our agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you please hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to our meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted prior to the meeting?
Madam President, I did receive one written comment. The comment comes from Pamela Charles, two-two-two-seven Cornforth Place, Beloit, Wisconsin. She writes, "City council members are elected to represent the citizens of Beloit. Representation requires knowledge of issues that affect the residents of our city as well as being approachable and receptive to concerns and questions of citizens. The city of Beloit Facebook page, managed by the city, is one avenue to communicate with the public and to receive communication from the public. It is a useful tool until it is abused. I was very disappointed to see on the city of Beloit Facebook page a counselor post insulting and very inappropriate remarks in response to questions posted regarding city playground closures. Even when called out by several citizens on the inappropriateness of his behavior, the counselor continued, 'The site was being monitored by city staff as evidenced by selective responses to some questions post, posted. But at no time were comments disabled due to the aggressive tone and nature of the counselor's remarks. These remarks, both angry and ugly from the counselor and others in, that he incited, are all now part of the city of Beloit public record. Is that how we want to present our city? A presentation to the council under quorum, as well as state laws pertaining to public records and the appropriate staff oversight and monitoring of the city's social media pages, would benefit this council, the citizens, and our city. There's enough division in our world. If our citizens cannot pose questions without being attacked, perhaps there should be no comments allowed.'" That ends Ms. Charles's comments. There were no others, uh, done in writing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council this evening? Public comment is now closed.
Item six is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any counselor like anything removed from the consent agenda? Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including items six A through six M? Is there a motion?
I still move, this is Counselor Blakely.
Moved by Counselor Blakely, is there a second?
Counselor Keys will second.
I couldn't tell if that was Counselor Prushel or Counselor Keys.
Either way.
Uh, let's say Counselor Keys. So I'll have a second by Counselor Keys. At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel. President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, seven zero. Item seven are licenses, there are none this evening. Item eight is ordinances. Item eight A is consideration of ordinance number three six nine six, amending the zoning district map of the city of Beloit from C1 Office District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District, for the property located at twenty-three fifteen Prairie Avenue. This is second reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a second reading, so, um, we have our community development director, Julie Christensen, who is available to answer any questions that we may have. So with that said, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. So is there a motion?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Prushel. Now we'll take questions and have discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, Madam President.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, Madam President, thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes seven zero. Item eight B is consideration of ordinance number three six nine eight to amend section thirty-two point oh six sub one of the Code of General Ordnances of the city of Beloit pertaining to the issuance of certificates of appropriateness. This is first reading.
Our community development director, Julie Christensen, will present at this time.
Section thirty-two point oh six one of the Historic Preservation Ordinance currently provides a limited number of cases under which I can or my designee issue certificate of appropriateness, rather than have them go into the full Landmarks Commission. And those include things like roofs, scutters, fences, um, some private sidewalks. Um, but what it doesn't include are, um, ADA ramps. And so we've been getting more requests for those ADA ramps on locally landmarked properties within the city, and often this causes problems for those residents, um, because the Landmarks Commission has to approve them. And sometimes we've had cases where the resident could not be released from the hospital, um, sometimes it's a VA hospital, um, until that ramp is in place. And, um, so where the Landmarks Commission does support this amendment to the ordinance, and this would basically allow staff to review and approve those ADA compliant ramps, which would prohibit delays in constructing safe access points for our residents. And this is on your agenda for first reading tonight.
Thank you, Julie. This is a first reading, so can I please have a motion to lay this over? Is there a first?
Madam President, um, when is it appropriate for me to ask that, uh, that the second reading be waived and that we vote on this tonight?
We would have to, can, just a minute, can we have Clerk Stotler to please make a clarification?
So, uh, Counselor Blakely, if this is the time that you want to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading, you could do so, and another counselor would need to second that motion.
Thank you, Lori. I would like to make a motion that we suspend the second reading for this ordinance.
Counselor Keys will second.
Okay, to suspend the rules, a first by Counselor Blakely, a second by Counselor Keys. Um, that said, we will take questions and comments from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Uh, not a motion, but I'm glad that we're doing this, makes a lot of sense.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Only to say, especially as a member of Landmarks Commission, which does a great job, but I know that, um, residents need fast action when someone in the home has been injured or because of disease, they need to have a ramp constructed quickly. So I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, but I love it when a city can cut through things, use common sense, and just do something that's best for our citizens. So congratulations to everybody who did this. Thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No questions. I just think it's great we're able to be responsive to those in the community that needed, and as it was highlighted, some of these things are, are time-sensitive in order for people to get home safe, and so, um, I appreciate us moving on this.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't, but I could see a good reason to suspend the rules and get this enacted as quickly as possible, in case anybody out there is waiting.
Thank you. At this time, there's a motion and a second to suspend the rules. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
The motion to suspend the rules passes unanimously. Now you would need a motion with a second to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I still move, Counselor Blakely.
Okay, moved by Counselor Blakely, is there a second?
Yes, Nancy Forbeck, second.
Seconded by Counselor Forbeck. Can we, at this time, we have a motion and a second to move forward with this ordinance. Can I ask the clerk to please call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item eight C is consideration of ordinance number three seven zero zero to repeal section seven point two-nine sub eight of the Code of General Ordnances of the city of Beloit pertaining to electrical outlets, receptacles, circuits, and smoke detectors. This is first reading.
At this time, our community development director, Julie Christensen, will present.
The section in question is in the Property Maintenance Code, and it previously required houses undergoing an electrical service upgrade to be brought up to code with respect to a certain number of outlets, ground faults, interrupters, and circuits. Um, the legis, state legislature has preempted local ordinances like this that are not in strict compliance with the National Electric Code. Therefore, this section must be repealed. Um, so the smoke detectors are still required in compliance with section seven point two-five-eight of the Property Maintenance Code. Um, so this was just in two locations, so that will remain. Um, this is on your agenda for first reading tonight.
Thank you, Julie. This is a first reading, so can I please have a motion to lay over this item?
I'll make that motion to lay over.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Prushel, is there a second?
Levy, second.
Seconded by Counselor Levy. Now we'll take questions and discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, Madam President, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there's a motion and a second to lay over the ordinance. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes seven zero. Item eight D is consideration of ordinance number three seven zero two to amend sections one point eight nine sub two and one point eight nine sub seven A of the Code of General Ordnances of the city of Beloit pertaining to the Traffic Review Committee. This is first reading.
Thank you. At this time, our city manager Luther will present.
Thank you. Before you is an amended ordinance, uh, that removes one of the members of the Traffic Review Committee so that, uh, the committee would not be so heavily influenced by staff members, and it reduces the meeting frequency, um, from monthly to every other month. Um, the ability still stands to hold special meetings if an additional meeting was required in addition to the every other, uh, month meetings. And those are the two most significant, uh, changes. I'd be happy to respond to any other, uh, questions you might have. Um, this was brought forward in response to, um, you know, some concerns that had been raised about this particular committee, and certainly in the future, we can evaluate, um, other potential modernizations, but this was the request of the members of the Traffic Review Committee at this time, so we're bringing them to council, uh, for your action. This is a first reading only. Um, staff is not recommending or, uh, does not necessarily think that, uh, waiver of the rules is necessary or suspension of the rules is necessary. Um, this, these changes would go into effect, uh, for, potentially for, um, the first regular meeting late May.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. As you said, this is a first reading. Can I please have a motion to lay this over?
I will make that motion to lay over.
Moved by Counselor Prushel, is there a second?
Counselor Keys will second.
Seconded by Counselor Keys. Now we'll take questions and discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Nope, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes, just a brief one for City Manager Luther. Um, Lori, I just wondered, um, I, I know we will hear more about this since we're carrying it over, but how many staff members will be, um, named as members of the, uh, renovated Traffic Review Committee?
If I may, uh, Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Our City Attorney, Beth Kruger, will respond to that.
Sorry, I just had the ordinance up. Um, the staff members are the Public Works Director, City Engineer, and Chief of Police or Chiefs Designee, and there's also a non-staff member with the school district that has a representative. And previously, the project engineer was a non-voting member.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any further questions, Counselor Blakely?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I guess I just would leave it up to Counselor Prushel to say why this would make a difference in how often, um, the, uh, committee met. It seemed to me I've been seeing in things on Facebook frustration about why this committee wasn't meeting, but I'm just wondering, was it because of the staff member that he couldn't make those meetings? I guess I don't understand the whole issue here.
If I may.
Just a minute, Council, uh, City Manager Luther is gonna respond to you. Go ahead.
Thank you. If I may, um, there was not an issue with having quorum. Uh, there wasn't a concern about the lack of meetings in calendar year 2020, and, uh, understood, uh, received that feedback, and staff has been directed to make sure that whatever schedule the council deems appropriate is what will be adhered to. Um, because of our response to COVID in 2020, uh, there was a temporary lag in items that required. that required action to bring forward to this body. And the lack of meetings being scheduled, if you will, was not due to a lack of quorum, which is, I think, perhaps how it may have sounded. But that was not due to a lack of quorum.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. Counselor Forbeck, do you have any further questions or discussion at this time?
No, that was helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes, one question. It was mentioned that this request to decrease frequency was brought forward by the committee. Was this a voting item? And if so, do, I was just looking and I couldn't see what the vote was.
If I may.
Attorney Kruger will respond to that.
I happen to be, I happen to be attending as the tech person to that meeting, and the vote was unanimous to move to a by every other month meeting.
Thank you so much.
So it was consensus?
Yes, unanimous.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion, Counselor Keys?
No, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes. This is not my first tenure on this committee. I was on it my first year on the council in 2016. And we only had, I think, about half the meetings that we had scheduled for that year. There, when I was assigned to this committee last year in April, I said that I would, I would hope that we'd meet and that I thought it was an important committee to have some kind of input from, because we can all agree that, I think, probably at least half, if not more, of our calls about issues in the city, with citizens' issues in the city, involved something to do with traffic and parking or something related to our streets, et cetera. And without a committee meeting, there's no opportunity to bring that to the attention of the City Council, except adding council meeting. So I thought we should, you know, work on getting this Traffic Review Committee back on track and maybe re-energizing it. I believe there's currently two openings, and it could be just one now, I'm not sure, offhand. So the idea when we were having discussions was to do something to re-energize the committee, a baby step, let's say, to take, to remove one staff member so there's not that to consider, to go to every other month so that there's certainly something should fall on the agenda during that time. And that, that we discussed changing the time, but that's a whole, that's a whole big follow-up act, so, you know, it's 1:30 in the afternoon on a Monday meeting right now, so shifting time is a little more than just shifting a timeframe. And it is staff-heavy, it's also, you've got the school board reps. So it's, there's a lot of technical things that the committee does that basically you're going to do regardless, because that's how the state statutes indicate that should be done. But there's a lot of opportunity for input, for feedback, and something that should happen to the focus of the council level. So hopefully, we can get this committee back on track. The last time I had a meeting before this one in March was October of 2019. That's a long time. And I think it's something we need to do. And I would encourage any citizens out there to apply, you know, to join the committee. There's openings. We could certainly use some input there. So if you have any other questions, I'll go on to answer. It was a very interesting conversation we had, and I think everybody's clear where we want to go and what we want this committee to represent and do, so.
Thank you, Counselor Prushel, for that clarification. At this time, there is a motion and a second to lay over the ordinance. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll at this time?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item 9 is appointments, and there aren't none this evening. Moving us to item 10, counselor activities and upcoming events.
We're at a point in our agenda where we'll have councils report on the activities and upcoming events that they participated in. And also, if they want to give a committee report, they're certainly welcome to do that, beginning with Vice President Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. Really, just like before every election, I always remind people to get out and vote, and I always say you can't complain if you don't vote, so go do that. If you need to see what's on your ballot or where to go, you go to myvote.wi.gov. That's my report.
Thank you. Next, Counselor Blakely.
Thank you, Madam President. You'd mentioned earlier that I'm a member of the Municipal Library Board, which I indeed am, and I urge the public to help celebrate National Library Week by heading over to the library or checking the library website to see what all is going on. I think it's fabulous that we have decided to no longer collect fines on youth and young adult materials. That'll make it so much easier for families to save a bit of money and still do a lot of reading. So congratulations to Nick Demasas and the library. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck.
Really, I have no report, other than saying my usual. Ken and I are trying to support our local small businesses any way we can here in Beloit during all this. I want to encourage people to stay careful. My husband and I just got back from Rochester, Minnesota. We were up at the Mayo Clinic, and I'm telling you, everybody's wearing a mask and being very serious. So we're almost there, everybody. Please stay safe. Thank you.
Counselor Keys.
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing to report from the Parks, Recs, and Conservation Commission, other than our next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, April 14th. But I am excited to share that, starting today, Wisconsin-wide, all Wisconsinites over the age of 16 are eligible to receive their COVID-19 vaccination. And I want to highlight the several ways that you can request your vaccine. So first, you're encouraged to watch for communication from your healthcare provider and/or check your health system's website for the process. And I know Beloit Health System does have open vaccine clinics and hours posted on their Facebook site. Two, check at your local pharmacies for their vaccine availability and vaccination processes. And three, you can request vaccination through the Wisconsin COVID-19 Vaccine Registry, and they'll help connect you with the health departments and community-based vaccine clinics. And so right along those lines, personally, I received my second COVID-19 vaccine one week ago today, and even after a robust immune response, I couldn't be more thrilled. It's just another opportunity to help keep my family and my community healthy and to help slow the spread of COVID-19. And listening to some national public health officials earlier today, I just want to reiterate caution and the importance of adhering to basic pandemic control precautions in order to help us avert and avoid a fourth wave or surge of COVID-19. And when you're able, please consider signing up to receive your COVID-19 vaccine. Next, I do want to extend a big thank you to the Beloit Fresh Start Youth Build AmeriCorps program for leading a neighborhood cleanup, walking and picking up litter around the Merrill Neighborhood. They were able to pick up 11 bags of trash in an hour, and I really want to thank them for keeping, helped keep our neighborhoods clean and healthy, because that truly makes a difference. And finally, I want to encourage everyone to look for an activity throughout April, with the weeks leading up to Earth Day being Earth Month, to help make our green spaces, waterways, and parks a little cleaner, healthier, and safer. I have seen many virtual activities through numerous clubs and organizations, and recently became aware of an upcoming environmental challenge led by Beloit's Wilti Environmental Center later this month. So stay tuned, and thank you to all who participate. This ends my report.
Thank you, Counselor Keys. Great information. Next, Counselor Levy.
No report.
Counselor Prushel.
No report. I think I've said quite enough, and I regret nothing that I said. Thank you.
Next, now it's for my report. First, I just want to mention on March 24th, Governor Evers approved the Beloit Casino Project. This was truly a game changer for Beloit in terms of jobs, shared revenues, and increased tourism. I am grateful to the governor, Hochunk Nation, our Beloit City Manager, staff, counselors, and all involved in this endeavor. We are another step closer to making this project a reality. Next, I'll reiterate what Counselor Keys shared. Today, April 5th, all Wisconsinites 16 and older are eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. Residents that live in Rock County can go to therockcountyshot.com website or the United Way Black Hawk Region website for more information or sign up on the DHS Vaccine Registry. Go to vaccinate.wi.gov or call 844-684-1064 between 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And again, that number is 844-684-1064. Also, the Beloit Police Department Virtual Meet and Greet will be held on Wednesday, April 7th, from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. To register, please go to publiccomment@beloitwi.gov or call Sarah Locke, our Communications Director, at 364-6726. There are two final internal candidates for Beloit Police Chief, Lieutenant Andre Sales and interim Chief and Inspector Thomas Stigler. Congratulations to both of them on being selected as finalists, and special thanks to the Beloit Police and Fire Commission for hosting this event. In closing, I want to give my sincere condolences to the families of Robert Gilliam, Paulella Levy, Counselor Levy's mother, and all those who've experienced loss. Let's keep them in our hearts and prayers. And remember that your voice is your vote, so please don't forget to vote tomorrow. Polling places will be on our City of Beloit website. This ends my report for this evening. Next, we'll go to item 12A.
Item 12A is consideration of Resolution 2021-45, granting an exception to Section 30.40/2/7 of the signed ordinance for the property located at 2911 Milwaukee Road.
Community Development Director Julie Christensen will present to us.
Signs Now Rockford has filed an appeal of the Plan Commission's decision of March 3rd, 2021, that denied their request for an exception to the sign ordinance to allow two secondary on-premise signs to be larger than 30 square feet in area for the new Verizon Wireless store located at 2911 Milwaukee Road. Section 30.487 of the signed ordinance provides that an aggrieved applicant may appeal to the City Council within 30 days of receiving a written decision, which Signs Now Rockford did on March 21st, 2021, following receipt of the written Plan Commission decision dated March 11th, 2021. The applicant sought a sign ordinance exception, which would allow, they installed a primary sign at 50 square feet, and then they requested an exception to allow those two secondary signs to also be 50 square feet. They agreed to forego a permitted pole or monument sign near the roadway of up to 150 square feet if the exception would be approved. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on March 3rd, 2021. A motion to adopt the resolution granting the requested exception failed to pass with a tie vote of three in favor and three opposed. The commissioners who opposed the request expressed general concerns about the number of exceptions being granted by the Plan Commission and stated that they did not want to grant an exception to the sign ordinance and that signs should meet the requirements of the sign ordinance. They did file an appeal, as I stated before, but they stated that their belief is that it qualifies for an exception for the same reasons stated in the staff's reports with the Plan Commission, which is attached. The signed ordinance requires compliance with three standards in order to grant an And then the first is compliance with the strict letter of the signed ordinance would create an economic hardship by either unreasonably restricting an on-premise sign owner from advertising a business or running in conformity with such regulations unnecessarily burdens him upon an owner of an on-premise sign, that the hardship is not self-created, and that this exception will not undermine the purpose of the sign ordinance or the public interest. The applicant is stating that they believe they met those three standards, and that's why they filed their appeal. What is on your agenda tonight is a resolution granting an exception to Section 30.402/7 of the sign ordinance for that property, subject to the conditions that the property owner may install two secondary on-premise wall signs at 50 square feet each, as shown in the application attachments. If the owner elects to install a fourth wall sign on the rear, it may not exceed 30 square feet in area, which is code. No freestanding primary sign, ground, or pole may be constructed on the property. One directional sign that complies with the signed ordinance may be installed to guide vehicular traffic. An architecture review certificate and sign permit are required prior to construction of any sign. And then the standard condition you see on a lot of our resolutions, that any major changes, actually, it's a little different, shall be approved by the Plan Commission, and the Director of Planning and Building Services may approve minor changes administratively. And this is on your agenda for action tonight.
Thank you, Julie. At this time, can I please entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
I will make that motion.
Moved by Counselor Prushel. Is there a second?
Vice President Anderson, a second.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Prushel, a second by Vice President Anderson. So at this time, we'll take questions and discussion, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, Madam President.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I have minor concerns about us setting into motion, well, it wouldn't be a definite policy change, but it would be a trend in that direction as far as granting exceptions for signage. May I ask Julie Christensen just to comment on that a little bit, because you had mentioned it? If you don't mind, Julie, thank you.
I don't, I guess I'm not understanding what the question is.
Oh, I guess I'm just interested in hearing a bit more about why others on the commission felt that granting an exception might be setting a trend in motion. Do you have any remarks that you remember from the discussion?
Staff recommended, felt that these signs met the requirements of the code, met the three criteria. Plan Commission did not comment on any of their criteria. They basically focused on the ones who were opposed, focused on that they don't think that people should be able to apply for sign ordinance exceptions, and that they think when these corporations come in, they don't even consider the sign, they don't feel like they consider the sign ordinance. They think they just bring forward whatever signs that they want and exceptions, and that they just didn't want to support any more of those. And so what's required by the ordinance is that you look at the three criteria and determine whether the signs meet the criteria. And I'm sure Mark was at the meeting, so he probably has his own.
I was going to interject there, because I was there. And I would point out that the Plan Commission tied 3-3. So they didn't really take a stand on it, but due to the tie, the motion, the waiver, the whatever exception we're making to the sign ordinance fails. I thought the offer was extremely reasonable. I thought some of the objections were a bit baffling. One objection was that there was no guarantee going forward that the next owner of this property wouldn't, you know, non-Verizon, whoever this is, would not put a wall sign out there. And because it's a projected hypo- And because it's a projected hypothetical in the future, you can't ban that, you can't, you can't say that, you can't, you can't legislate against that. It sounded a lot. So that was an odd objection. And I thought that the biggest problem we have with clutter in the commercial districts is clearly freestanding pole signs. I don't think the buildings themselves are cluttered, because they're going to be there regardless. And the signs on them are going to be there regardless. So the big contributor to clutter in the commercial district that some members find offensive and would like to fix, I think is a pole sign, freestanding monolith, you know, monolithic pole signs and stuff. So I thought this is a wonderful opportunity to not have that happen. And I was just baffled when the vote came down 3-3 and it was tied. So, and I immediately asked Julie, what's going to happen next? Because I was, I was astonished. You know. Anyway, that's what I was going to get to when I got to it, but I thought I'd answer your question now, in case others have similar questions.
Thank you.
Remain available to Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Prushel.
Thank you very much, Mark and Julie. I have greater clarity on it now, and I'm assured that they've met all the requirements and so on. And I heard very clearly what Mark had to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Prushel. And I'm sure you'll have more to add when we get more comments and as we go further into discussion. So thank you for that clarification, and thank you, Julie. Counselor Blakely, if you don't have any further questions, I'll go ahead to Counselor Forbeck. At this time, Counsel Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, although I have to say, it always sets up an interesting dynamic for being a counselor when you have staff suggesting one way and the commission, you know, suggesting another way. But that's my only comment. Thank you.
Next, Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I have just a clarification question. So by requesting these two exceptions for the signs on the building, they're waiving the pole sign. Is that correct? So they will not be able to pursue the pole sign while Verizon is the owner?
No. So the resolution before you tonight, if approved, would not allow them to have a freestanding primary sign, ground or pole sign to be constructed on the property. They can, however, you can always amend a resolution, so they, but they would have to come back through the public process to do that. So we can't prohibit them from ever applying for that pole sign. They've just gone on the record as saying they don't want the pole sign. And when I talked to the sign company, he indicated that all they do is install the sign. So Verizon actually provides the sign, or someone else provides the sign, and they do not want a freestanding site, sign at this site. But they could always come back and apply, but it would have to go to Plan Commission in order to do that.
Thank you for clarifying. No further questions.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions, and Julie, if you can't answer it now, you can get back to me. Do we know how many exceptions to the sign ordinance we have made? Because I know when we were putting this into place, that was one of my concerns, that I want to make sure that we don't have a lot of exceptions. And that being said, if we see where we've had an abundance of them, do we need to relook at the policy and address it to meet some of the exceptions that we've had, so we can limit the amount of the exceptions that we grant? Because I too see that, for me, that's an issue, that we have a policy in place and that we make exceptions.
So we have an, a sign ordinance which allows people to apply for exceptions, and they have specific criteria that they have to meet. We do a handful of exceptions every year, not every year, but we do a handful of exceptions some years, but we do probably close to 100 sign permits. So in terms of percentage of exceptions, it's not that large. It's a small percentage. We are working on the sign ordinance, a sign ordinance update that's on, like, I'm working with legal to do it. I haven't done my part, so it's my, I haven't started working on it yet this year, but we're planning to update the sign ordinance to be a little, the ordinance right now is written really tightly, so it doesn't have a lot of flexibility, and so we would like to make it a little bit more flexible, which would allow us just kind of look at the whole site and how it functions. Right now, this secondary sign section kind of causes us problems. And so we really need to redo the sign ordinance, which will take a little bit of time to get done. But we are not doing a large amount of second exceptions. We're just doing a handful each year, and that has come up at Plan Commission as to how many we're doing. I think for the commission, what it feels like is, you know, that every time there's something new on Milwaukee Road, they want more signage, but we do sign requests all over the city, and it's really just a small percentage.
Okay, thank you. Well, yeah, I like the idea that you're going to be reviewing the ordinance and seeing where it needs to be addressed, because I, I think I share with their concerns of making the exceptions. So I like that, so thank you.
Counselor Levy, did you have any other further questions? I thought you had two.
Uh, no, I'm done, thanks.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Next, Counsel Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, thank you, Julie, for clarifying all of that. And it is a real small percentage of all the signs that are issued. And it needs modern, the ordinance needs to be modernized. And I think it's interesting that we get a lot of these, like, the last three that came through like that were all corporate chains, Popeyes, Verizon Now, I'm sure there's another one, I'm thinking of Tudovo. They were the big, big-name ones, and they were all following corporate guidance, corporate labeling, branding standards, and it didn't comply with our ordinance. Now, I don't know who to fault, but you have to make allowances, and you have to have an ordinance that's designed to be flexible about it, and it's not, you know, something we definitely have to look at. It took three years, I think, last time, Julie, to do the sign ordinance. I don't expect it to take that long this time, though. But it was a, it was a process. Kevin remembers that. I'm glad you're here, Kevin, so you can talk to that. Because I remember, I just got on the Parks Commission shortly after that was passed, and we could finally start putting signs at our parks, because we had a sign ordinance to go by. So it was a long time coming till we get the plan where we could do that. So anyway, that's my only comments, other than what I said before. I thought it was a pretty straightforward proposal until the vote happened, and it was like, wow, how, how'd that happen? Anyway, we have an opportunity to correct that tonight, and I hope we do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Prushel. Thank you for serving on that committee. At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, 7-0, item 12B. The City Council may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section 1985 Sub 1 Sub E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session, namely, one, to discuss offers to purchase Outlet 1 near 720 Gateway Boulevard and 1450 Gateway Boulevard, and two, the potential purchase of a strip of land immediately adjacent to the Rock River near 80/100 East Grand Avenue. The Council will reconvene and open session to take action on the matters discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Clerk Stottler. May I please have a motion to go into closed session?
I so move, Counsel Blakely.
It sounded like it was moved by Counselor Blakely, seconded by Counsel Forbeck. At this time, there's a motion and a second to go into closed session. Any discussion? I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
We are in closed session at 8:23 p.m. Nancy Forbeck, I so move.
Motion by Counsel Forbeck, is there a second? Second by Counselor Keys. That said, at this time, we'll have our City Attorney Kruger to give us more information and take any questions.
For Resolution 2021-050, the Council is considering an offer to purchase the property at 1450 Gateway Boulevard. That property is a regional detention basin that's currently owned by the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation. It is the city's intent to maintain that property pursuant to all state regulations related to stormwater, and the city is in the best position to do that maintenance. So the GBEDC has agreed to sell the property to the city for a dollar, and you have an offer to purchase and resolution that would, that would accomplish that before you in Resolution 2021-050. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
If there's no further discussion, we have a first and a second. Can I ask the clerk to please call the roll at this time?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That resolution passes unanimously.
And we had just come into open session, and just for the public to know, we made a motion to approve the offer to purchase Outlet 1 near 720 Gateway Boulevard and the 1450 Gateway Boulevard. Is that correct?
We have a second resolution, 2021-051, and that's for the approval of Outlet Number 1 near 720 Gateway Boulevard. So we would need a motion to approve that resolution.
Okay, so we're on to the next resolution. Is there a motion at this time?
Nancy Forbeck, I so move.
We have a motion by Counsel Forbeck, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? And if there's not, did we want Attorney Kruger to give us any information? Can you do that, Attorney Kruger, at this time?
Yes, I can. So for the public's information, there is an Outlet Number 1 near the property at 720 Gateway Boulevard. That property is just to the east of the Tourist Information Center on the interstate. That property just recently changed hands from the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation to the Hendricks for a building, building of two different buildings. The city would like to accept ownership of the outlot in order to maintain the regional detention basin there. The city is in the best position to do that. So the offer to purchase before you is a transaction from the GBEDC to the city for a dollar, and the city will be responsible for that property moving forward.
Thank you. That said, we have a first and a second on the floor with no further discussion. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That resolution passes unanimously. Under Item 12C this evening, the City Council will adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985 Sub 1 Sub C to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation debt of public employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, namely, to discuss annual performance appraisal for the city manager, Lori Luther. The Council will not reconvene into open session.
Thank you. May I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
I so move, Counsel Blakely.
Move by Counselor Blakely, is there a second?
Second, Nancy Forbeck.
Second by Counsel Forbeck. At this time, there's a motion and a second to go into closed session. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
We are back in closed session at 9:16 p.m.
The Council, the City Council meeting for this evening is closed, and we are now in closed session. And we will not return to open session, and we'll adjourn directly at a closed session. Thank you for listening, and stay healthy.